Good evening, I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Winston-Salem South County Board of Education. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Board of Education Work Session for November the 10th. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to have a moment of silence to recognize the life of one of our beloved employees at Easton Elementary, Ms. Therese Gaither. So if we can have a moment of silence, please, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and officially call our meeting to order. We will now do our roll call to establish a quorum. Board Member Burke. Board Member Crowley.
Present.
Board Member Breimer.
Here.
Board Member Calvert-Hayes.
Present.
Board Member Mott Singer.
Present.
Board Member Jones.
Present.
Board Member Parker.
Present.
Board Member Kaplan.
Present.
Of course, I'm here and we have officially established a quorum. Next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. If we will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We thank you. As we gather together tonight, there's a lot on our minds, a lot of things we're not sure about. So we ask for blessings for all who are working hard for our school system. Bless those in need of your help during these trying times. Let us all be kind and understanding to each other and be with our family that just lost their loved one. We ask in your name. Amen.
The next item is approval of the agenda, but we need to make an amendment to the agenda under Buildings and Grounds for the Action Item. It should read under Action Item A, under Buildings and Grounds, Consider Approval for Public Hearings of the Middle School Redistricting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the amended amendment?
Yes, I move to approve the agenda with the amended amendment to change the Buildings and Grounds Action Item.
And a second?
No further question or discussion, all in favor? Oh, did you hear? Oh, okay. Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Any opposed? I think the motion passes. So we do have some new business, but what I will say, after talking with Mr. Sheryl, who is over our technology, he wanted to help us to try to manage this hybrid meeting environment better. And so he has some recommendations on how to try to manage virtual and in-person. And so he has asked me to convey that the advice is to, before you talk, to, you know, raise your hand. We do have someone on-site that is making sure that we recognize all raised hands so that I will be alerted. And until you're recognized, just to stay muted. And if that's not the case, then the technology here will mute you just to be of assistance. And just know that because it's hard for us to manage a lot of the audio difficulty and again, the technology, as we move forward to try to maintain, you know, a great meeting in this hybrid model, if you're muted so that we can try to sustain stuff, that is just to make sure that we're carrying on with a great meeting and we will try to attend to whatever problems we have as soon as possible. So thank you for your consideration and trying to help us manage this hybrid meeting space. So next on the agenda is new business. We do have a few discussion items. The first discussion item is the ABC Science Collaborative Introduction with Dr. Kenesha Zimmerman. And she is co-chair of this Duke Clinical Research Collaborative. I think maybe she is being brought in virtually.
Can you hold her?
Okay. Hey, Dr. Zimmerman, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well. Thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you for having me. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So thank you so much for having me. I'm here on behalf of the ABC Science Collaborative, just to give you an overview of our program. I'm Associate Professor of Pediatrics at Duke University and, as mentioned, I'm the co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative. So we all know that COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on schools. There have been a lot of questions about how to, if it's safe to return kids to school, and if so, how do we do this safely and responsibly? People are really worried, they have a lot of questions, and people, different stakeholders certainly have different questions about.
Dr. Zimmerman, I think we lost you.
Is she muted?
Dr. Zimmerman, if, can you put, respond to the chat box? If you can hear me respond in the chat box, because we cannot hear you. Oh, she left the meeting and she, looks like she just left the meeting, maybe she's trying to come back in. Thank you for your patience while we try to get her back in. Hey, Dr. Zimmerman, we got disconnected.
Yes, it's halfway. So I'm just happy, I don't know how much you heard, I'm certainly happy to answer questions or continue the presentation. I have no idea how much you actually heard.
I think we were at the slide where there were questions from the community from different perspectives. And yes, we are interested in you finishing the presentation. Yes.
Perfect. Give me one second.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we talked about how things, how there are many people, many people are worried, they have different questions. And so our job has really been to, we created the ABC Science Collaborative with the funding from NIH, to make sure that we're pairing scientists and physicians with the school and with community leaders to really understand the most current and relevant information to make sure that we're keeping kids and teachers and families safe. We are public health scientists, we're physicians, we're affiliated with Duke, we're affiliated with the University of North Carolina, but we're also parents and really care about the community. Our team is quite diverse with a lot of different talents. Danny and I are the co-chairs of this effort, but a number of other people, as I mentioned, from both Duke and UNC, with infectious disease expertise, critical care expertise, epidemiologic expertise, et cetera. Our goal is really to combine knowledge with this collaboration so that schools are really empowered to move forward. We have built collaborations across communities, across a number of communities across the state. We built collaborations with NCIE and local education leaders. We share and build knowledge to help drive good decisions that will keep our community safe. And then we also want to ready the institutions with tools and resources. We've even created kind of maps for how you might go through a school day to help schools really figure out detailed plans that can really keep people safe. We're committed really to three aims. One is learning, so that's sharing the existing guidance about COVID-19. We've done that through a series of webinars, testimonials, clips, we have a website and a lot of information that we share through that. We also do a lot of data sharing and information sharing through the meetings that we're having with superintendents and school leaders across the state. We also do it through informed decision-making. So actual data from the districts, as well as data from across the counties and across the state, in order to make sure that we are locally, concentrating locally on what's happening. And then research, we are funded by the NIH, but our goal is really to partner with schools and educators with a commitment to making things better for schools and for making and improving outcomes for children. For that, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Zimmerman. Any questions from the board? Oh, Ms. Mott Singer has a question, yes.
First, thank you so much for being here. I'm really glad to see you here. I did have several questions. So how many districts are involved in this collaborative at this point?
There are possibly 50 across the state that are involved. We also have some involvement with some charter schools, locally in Durham primarily. We've gotten a lot of interest from a lot of people, but our team is quite small and so our bandwidth isn't super big, but that's what our involvement is for.
So you have about 50 districts who you're involved with. And how many of those districts are currently in Plan B versus remote learning?
Sure, probably about a third to a half of those districts are in Plan B and some moving to Plan A. Most of the, most of the Plan B is really more rural counties and rural districts and some are, some of the larger districts that have just started to go in.
Okay. And so a lot of the counties, some of them are small rural and some of them are more urban and closer to us in demographics. And do you recommend certain metrics be followed according to the CDC? And do you have recommended clear policies on the mitigation strategies?
Sure. So the second question is actually a lot easier than the first. With regard to the mitigation strategies, I would say that we know that the three W's work and have been successful. Based on data that we've had collected from about 60,000 students and staff in districts that are in the collaborative that are open and have been in the hybrid plan, there have been about 195 cases of COVID that have been identified, but only eight cases of secondary transmission. And that's in the hybrid model, which suggests that schools are really doing an excellent job.
But, okay, so but you recommend, as far as, for example, masks, do you define what kind of masks and how correctly, or is it just anything you put on your face is acceptable?
Any face covering would be acceptable, which is consistent with NCIH's guidance as well. What needs to happen is that it needs to cover your nose to your chin. So wearing a mask here is not, that's not effective, and that's not what we're recommending at all. It definitely needs to be a mask that's fitting and that covers from nose to chin.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and as far as the metrics, so does your group have any recommendations about percentage positive testing or risk, you know, per 100,000, is there a population risk?
Sure.
So the CDC too, clear metrics. Do you give guidance on that?
So we have not given guidance on specific metrics, and I will tell you why that is. One, depending on how things are going with regard to whether or not you're testing as frequently as you were a few weeks ago, your percent positivity can change over the course of, a lot of this, as you know, with regard to the metrics is math, with regard to, you know, how many people are positive, how many cases you have for 100,000, et cetera, et cetera. We have seen that despite the fact that there is disease in the community, and that might be that you are at 100 cases per 100,000, it might be that you're at 900 cases per 100,000. And we certainly have seen that range within the collaborative, and that's in the community. However, that is not predictive of whether or not you're going to be successful in a hybrid model based on the data that we have. And that, that's primarily why we haven't been very focused on metrics and haven't, you know, have allowed people to kind of make their own metrics. But the data suggests that it doesn't really matter as long as you're doing the mitigation strategies.
And, but you're saying the mitigation strategies. I'm hearing some guidelines, but not really tight guidelines, that however the district chooses to define those mitigation strategies, as long as they include the three W's?
Yes, they would need to be, the three W's would need to be adhered to, but the creativity around how you adhere to them is, has worked in a number of different ways.
Okay. And then the question about research. So is the collaborative predominantly a research collaborative?
We are funded by the NIH. Our primary goal is to be helpful to the, to the communities and to schools. Our secondary goal is to make sure that we are creating new knowledge and learning so that other people can learn. So one of the things that we've done as part of this research agenda has been to collect information about secondary transmission from schools so that I'm able to share it with you.
So has it been like an IRB review board at all about the research? Are you working with any kind of research oversight?
Sure, of course. So we have had the initial IRBs reviewed by Duke University. Any research structure or any research question that comes out of this would be reviewed by Duke. The way that we've been working with districts is under DUAs and MOUs with regard to exchange of data. And then any research question that gets answered from the individual level is all consent-based and would need to go through that process for each individual patient, for each individual student.
So that was, the other question I had was about consent, because what we're doing right now is indeed research and not, you know, none of us have lived through a pandemic before, obviously. And we're, we're doing something new. And my question is, are people in these districts and in our community well aware that this is research and not based in long-term data?
We've been as transparent as we can be in these situations, certainly. I mean, everything would need consent, for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Dr. Hairston, did you want to say anything as it relates to Winston-Salem South County Schools sort of journey up to this point for this district to officially be a part of the ABC Collaborative? Before we thank Dr. Zimmerman for her time and really appreciate and look forward to the collaboration and partnership with this initiative?
Thank you again, Dr. Zimmerman. So we became aware of the ABC Collaborative during the summer. They work with Durham City Schools, I believe, and Wake, and also, was it Chapel Hill, Carboro? Okay. And we became more interested in the educational component of it. We knew that we had lots and lots of opinions about COVID and data use. So we started to listen in, superintendents, to their informational sessions. In fact, I invited some of you to participate in the informational sessions. Many school districts, they presented to all of the school districts through JACHOC. Many districts signed on. They certainly could not work with all districts, so they were selective. So they graciously went through the RTI, which is the Large District Consortium, and picked up districts who signed the MOU. And the MOU is a data-sharing MOU with consent information. Primarily, there are Friday morning meetings, and they meet with superintendents to share information, give superintendents an opportunity to fact-check and to inquire about things like data use, mask, and those types of things. They also were willing to attend board meetings to answer questions. So our MOU was sent last week, I believe. And because we do participate in a large district consortium, they also work with small districts as well, but primarily large districts. And, and moving forward, if there are specific questions and the interim superintendent or future superintendent would like, you all would like them to, as Ms. Dr. Zimmerman has been here this evening coming, respond to questions, are they more than willing to be a part of the board meetings as well moving forward?
Thank you. I think those are all of the questions we have for you, Dr. Zimmerman. Again, we are very appreciative of you all's energy to establish something for this state so that we can learn and, and ultimately in the future, you know, we are that much more capable of meeting these types of challenges because of you all's pioneering work in helping schools, you know, combat something that we never thought we would have to in our lifetime. So I am, you know, very humbled that we are part of this. And again, on behalf of our board, we thank you and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay.
Take care.
The next discussion item is the Winston-Salem South County School Inaugural Cohort of North Carolina Education Corps by Jevelyn Barna-Reed, our Chief Human Resource Officer.
Ooh, it's a little warm under here. Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury.
Good evening.
Board members. And I really like that sweater. And Superintendent Dr. Hairston. I brought up Cheryl Wright because this was definitely a collaboration between multiple departments to pull this off, and I'm really happy to bring some good news to the district that our district was selected by the state to participate in the North Carolina Education Corps Program. So what is the Corps Program? It's an initiative of the SBE in the Governor's Office for North Carolina, and it's designed to deploy talented community members to aid school districts with additional student support services beginning in January of 2021. And it's really exciting because we want to give some people a taste of our district. So I'm hoping it will be some long-term recruitment strategy for us. The North Carolina Education Corps will recruit, train, and deploy these Corps members to provide additional student services support such as tutoring. Other districts are selecting SEL assistants, but we are focusing on tutoring. And school districts will actually pay for the Corps members through our Gears Fund with a range of 1315 to 20 hours per hour. And we're able to do this through 2022. We've made a commitment through 2021, first we'll reevaluate and then come back and decide if we want to do a second year. So, you want to do this one?
Good evening. So just to tell you a little about Winston-Salem South County's involvement in this process. One, we had to submit an application, and so a team came together to submit that application. And then approximately a week later, we participated in an interview process. And so happily, we received an email on November 5th or November 6th that we were selected to participate. As Ms. Jevelyn has already said, just keep in mind that this was an effort through the COVID, a response to COVID, and how we can better support our students. And so one of our goals in working with EDCorps will be to look at placement within our remote learning centers as well. So we've requested 40 part-time court members to come within the district, and then, again, with tutoring at the forefront. But it's not just about tutoring, it's a whole, the whole child. So those that we're asking to come within are inspiring them to come to our community to serve in the capacity of support from SEL, academic of course, and then even a little bit beyond that, it will look into some, what we call the digital navigators, and that term actually came from EDCorps. So right now, EDCorps is already looking for and looking into building up the streamline, so to speak, of those court members that will join in on their team, and they're doing so now, and they'll continue to do so in December. They provide extensive training, and then once those persons are deployed to our area, we'll also have specific training to the district. And so that's it in a nutshell, unless you have questions and or concerns.
I just have one thing to add, that they reached out to us because they really see us as a regional leader. So we'll have likely some type of role of helping the smaller districts around us participate in this too, or at least somehow benefit from it. So we open the floor to questions.
With the tutoring, or the tutors that we decide to hire, can they be Spanish-speaking to kind of help with the needs around, around that in our district?
Yes, and so actually in the interview process, they pretty much asked us what we were looking for, and so we shared, we shared our community and the needs of our community with them. So I really, when they sent the email and said that we received it, that we were selected, it was heartwarming, one, to know that we were selected, but two, that our goals were aligned right along with the goals of the EDCorps and what they wanted to see from their services.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, you said that they would be in the remote learning centers. So if this is going through August 2022, if we, by some miracle, don't need remote learning centers for that long, and that is definitely our hope, where would these tutors be assigned?
What's, in our community and within our schools. So it's a combination of both.
So still working, we may not call them remote learning centers, but it may be things like Kids Cafe, some of those other things where they still work with.
Exactly.
Well, I think it's great. Thank you for pursuing this and working on it, because this is a, you know, really good opportunity for, for our community, you know, and great help for our kids.
Yes, Board Member Calvert-Hayes.
When we say part-time, what exactly are we looking at, part-time?
We told them of the 20 hours.
Of the 20 hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we worked it through for the budget with Ms. Willis-Gillis.
Thank you, we appreciate the good news. The next discussion item under new business is the purchase of Clear Face Masks by Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer. And while Lauren is coming up, I would And while Lauren is coming up, I would like to recognize the leadership of Val Young and FCAE in having some great conversations with board members and just in those conversations, helping us to understand some, you know, great recommendations like the one you see coming before you today with the clear mask to help our students and teachers. So, thank you so much, Val, for organizing these meetings so that we could meet the students and teachers where it matters and what their immediate needs are. So, thank you. Lauren?
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Harrison. So, I come to you this evening to request from operations to make a purchase of these masks with a viewing window. You can see from my humorous picture here that these masks actually meet the state mandate. We know that face shields are not an appropriate substitute. As Dr. Zimmerman spoke about, it needs to fit over the nose, under the chin, and then over the ears as well. So, I was very excited that a local vendor of ours in Kernersville was able to find these for us. There's a lot of people that make them that are disposable, which is a substantial cost. And so, we got 650 of these to begin with. We've been using them in our kindergarten, first grade classes for our teachers to do phonetic learning. And it's been a great opportunity so that they can show the children the movements of that process. And so, this additional purchase will allow us to provide, one, to our K-1 students so that the teachers can monitor those same movements and go through that learning process and that engagement with them. And then, we also have a number of teachers that are deaf and hard-of-hearing teachers, and they are working with those students as well, and it allows for them to monitor those lip movements. And there may be a number of other significant situations within the district where we would also provide these. So, we've been very excited about the first round and really look forward to the second round. Do you all have any questions about these? Deanna?
Yes. Do they have anti-fogging properties, kind of like scuba mask? Do you spray something on it to keep it from fogging up?
Yeah. So, you can use kind of a generic alcohol solution to clean them. They are actually fog resistant. I didn't believe that, but I got to test it, as you can see. And it was quite fog resistant. I was very impressed.
That's good.
Ms. Parker?
I visited a school today to see kindergarten in action. And a first-grade teacher had one of those and, you know, was using it. So, that was great. So, they are very, so I know that they're starting to use them as well in the school. So, thank you for that because having been a kindergarten teacher, it's very important those children see what your mouth is doing when you're trying to teach them sounds. So, that's wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on, under new business, is of course, action items. The first action item is to consider approval for purchase of Clear Face Masks. Is there a motion? Second, any further question or discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. There is a question from one of the board members. Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes. Will those be given to speech and language pathologists as well?
I think that, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes. Some of them actually already have them, but we'll.
Yeah, I think, yeah. That's what I thought I'd read.
So, there'll be enough for SLPs throughout any age group they're working with?
And their students.
Yeah.
And their students. And are they washable?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody who gets one, will they get one? Will they get more than one? How many? How are we going to distribute these?
One per person.
And will, we may get available for those who want to purchase more because it'll be hard to wear something one day, wash it every night. But will there be a way, if our distributors who are Kernersville, can somebody buy more if they want to buy more?
Sorry. I might be out of breath now. Yes, Ms. Mott Singer. So, they come from a manufacturer out of Texas. We're working with a local vendor to procure them. And so, we're initially starting with one for those K-1 teachers and students because they won't be wearing the mask all of the time. Kind of the initial expectation is that they'll use it during that learning process. EC also has some of these masks. They also have a few different versions as well. And so, there may be students that we find need to wear this every day based on those situations. And so, they would then be provided with more. We've also had some schools ask us about the vendor information because they may have PTAs that want to make purchases for the school. And so, we have shared that information with them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I think Board Member Burke had her hand up, and then I'll get to you, Board Member Parker.
Excuse me. Yes, I wanted to know, will these masks be made available for all of our bus drivers as well?
At this time, our bus drivers have received the standard five-face masks along with all of our other district staff. And they've also, as of Friday, received face shields. At this time, we have not planned to provide these for the viewing purpose for that instructional phonetic learning and our hearing impaired students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if a school needed these, would there be an opportunity for COVID dollars or Title I dollars for them to use some additional funds if a school?
Yeah. So, right now, the funds for this purchase will be with COVID dollars. And that was the initial small purchase that we started with as well. And so, our hope would be that if we, for those that need this, for those instructional purposes, we would support our schools for that. But if we have other areas where they're looking, that they would like this to be the standard in their school, then that may be school funds or something else that uses that for that purchase.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Thank you for running all the way back around here, in heels, too. Thank you. So, there are no further question or discussion. All of those in favor? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of the appointment and contract of the interim superintendent for Trish McManus. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any question or discussion? All in favor? Oh, there is a question. Sorry. Board Member Burke?
Yes. My question is, if Dr. McManus assumes this role as interim, will that leave us in a bind with the very necessary position that she was hired in this district for?
I'll let Dr. Harrison maybe answer that question. I don't think so.
Should the position be approved? Yes. It's an important position. But we have an individual that's capable, on an interim basis, of serving in her capacity with some reassignments of two employees, all the position, all the, everything would be covered. We would need to reassign two individuals in our leadership team. That reassignment would have all responsibilities covered.
Thank you. Any other question? All right. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Board Member Burke.
Go ahead.
Okay. All in favor? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. The next, the next item on the agenda, I am happy to now release and turn everything over to the chairs of the individual committees. So, next, the first committee meeting tonight is Finance. Board Member Carter Jones?
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. So, we have a few items for discussion this evening. The first one is an audit update. And so, I believe we have someone with us on the call from Dixon Hughes Goodman to go over the status of the update at this time.
April Bell was with us.
April, okay. I don't see Tyler. Okay, I see April. Thank you, April.
Yeah, I'm here too.
Okay, great.
Tyler, are you going to walk through it?
Yeah. Hey, how are you? Yeah. So, you have Tyler Beatty. I'm a senior manager with DHE and April Bell, who is the partner. And we just wanted to spend a little bit of time with you tonight to give you an update on the 2020 financial statement and single audit for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. I think first and foremost, we definitely want to acknowledge all the hard work and assistance that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools team has provided in regards to the audit this year. I definitely don't think we would be at a point in the audit process now without all of the hard work. The current open items for the fiscal year 2020 audit are currently as follows. So, Andrea just provided the Dental Plan OPEP report from Kavanaugh and McDonald today. And we're working through our procedures related to that. And for reference, this report wasn't received until April 2020 last year for the 2019 audit. Second item is the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools team is working on some of our last requests as it relates to our capital asset testing. We expect to have the necessary documentation in the next few days. And for reference, this documentation wasn't finalized until March and April of 2020 for the 2019 audit. And then, lastly, related to some of the CARES Act funding, which is required to be tested in accordance with the Uniform Guidance as a major program. Unfortunately, we're still waiting on the federal compliance supplement that dictates the procedures to be performed for the CARES Act funding. And this compliance supplement is provided by the Office of Management and Budget. Our most recent update that we got from the OMB, which came across late last week, was to expect this supplement by the end of November. Unfortunately, we're unable to complete our final release of the audit or really forecast when the audit release might be until the above information is perceived. Given that and given where we're at in the audit process, we fully anticipate that the compliance supplement related to the CARES Act funding will be the last item that we're waiting for. And it's also important to note that the LGC, that they have extended the audit submittal deadline this year to January 31st, 2021. Internally, we fully expect to release the audit way before the deadline. However, that's pretty much dependent on when the compliance supplement for the CARES Act funding will be received.
Thank you, Tyler.
Sure. Sweet. I mean, it's just three items, so not a laundry list of items.
Board members, do we have any questions for Tyler or April, both are on the call? Well, it sounds like that we are in a better place than we were last year with our audit, for sure. And we know that's because of Andrea and her team. And we thank you for what you guys are doing for us as well. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
I'm trying to look on the screen, too. I want to make sure no one at home had a question. I don't think so. Okay. So, Kevin, our Assistant Superintendent of Technology, will give us an update on the deployment of staff laptops.
Thank you, Chair Jones. And good evening, board members and Dr. Harrison. Let me juggle all these things here. I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight, seeking your approval to enter into a contract with one of our vendor partners to deploy our staff laptops. I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about our rationale and just some of the scope of the work tonight. So, as you may recall, this is the year that we had planned to roll new laptops out to our teachers. They are in their fifth year. That is one year longer than what we'd hoped to do. We'd hoped to have those on a four-year schedule, but for, you know, back, we discussed this, you know, months back, and we pushed those to a fifth year. So, those laptops are set to arrive the week after Thanksgiving. And we would like, I would like, and our staff, and I know all of you guys would agree, that we'd like to get those in our teachers' hands as quick as possible because our laptops that our teachers are using are an integral part of instruction. They have been since last spring, and they're very important. Our technology staff, our technical folks, some of the things we're doing now, as you recall, we've been installing the remote cameras into our classrooms, integrating with our sound. We still have our middle schools and high schools to work on on that. We've accomplished a lot in a very quick amount of time. Started that work around September 20th. We've deployed over 2,000 classrooms in the lower grades. And now, we've got to move forward as we stay ahead of the students returning. We still have 9,000 student Chromebooks set to arrive sometime in December, hopefully, first of January. We don't have a hard date from our manufacturer with distribution delays. So, our technology staff will be working on those, getting those asset tagged, getting them distributed out into the schools, built back into carts for students to share those in the buildings. And of course, we're assisting, maintaining all types of hardware and assisting our teachers. So, that's our current workload with our internal staff. And as I mentioned, we've got 3,900 teachers that are set to receive a new laptop. We have just over 4,000 ordered, 3,900 of which go to our certified teachers. So, the process is to have a team to come in, which what we're proposing is to outsource this, to have a team come in for 12 weeks that will be going into our classrooms individually with each teacher, swapping out their docking station, which their new laptop plugs into a new docking station, retrieving their old laptop, making sure everything prints, connects to their Promethean board, just the full setup to work with each teacher over, you know, 3,900 rooms. We hope to have that done in a 12-week period, which is the reason I'd like to bring in this team to help us with this, so we can be very timely with it because my staff will be working on the student, the 9,000 Chromebooks to go out to the students at that time, and continuing the camera installations for remote learning. So, it's really just a timing and a human resource capacity issue that we're trying to solve here. In your ensemble, you've got the full scope of the proposal, but this is just the breakdown of the 12 weeks. We'd have a seven-person team come in for a 12-week engagement for $157,000. Also, I wanted to bring you an idea of how to fund this. Andrea Gillis and I have talked about this. And with the current teacher laptops, we plan to surplus sell 2,000 of those. There's 5,500 in service. We're going to keep about 2,500 to distribute to our teacher assistants and other classified staff that are in need of a laptop. We'll get a couple more years out of those for our teacher assistants. Take 2,000 of those. I have a written proposal, a bid for $95 each on those that will be able to sell those for a return of $190,000 against the $157 expense to outsource the labor, which gives us a surplus of $32,000 to pay for this deployment project. And that's really it. Just wanted to get you guys your input on that and see how you feel about us bringing a team in to take care of our teachers as quick as we can with their new laptops. Questions?
I have one question. I noticed this is for teachers. Do our TAs get laptops?
Yeah, they're going to receive, they don't have laptops now. They're using whatever they can get their hands on. A lot of our teachers have our student Chromebooks. We need to get those back and get them into the student population. So, the existing teacher laptops, we're going to keep the best of the best of those 5,000 that are out there now, some of which are only about three years old because we bought a little batch later on, and we're going to redistribute those to our teacher assistants. We've got roughly 970 teacher assistants that all will receive a gently-used teacher laptop from the first.
I just know they're playing a greater and greater role in this.
They really are. And it's been a struggle. We've done all we can to get something in their hands since last spring, but this will give them opportunity to have a better device going forward as well.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
That sounds like a good plan, and I agree with Ms. Crowley that our TAs are really playing, I mean, they've always played an important role, but even stepping up more with what they're doing online, so.
Our hope is to start on December 1st, December through January, and through into February, hopefully get all this deployed and get our teachers going. It's the first of the year.
Great. Ms. Mott Singer, I know you're on Finance, and they're sharing their screen, so I can't see if you have a question.
Bring it back for you here.
I just didn't want to leave you out.
Don't think there's any hand raises there.
Okay. She must be good. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so next, Andrea Gillis, our Chief Financial Officer, will go over the local growth bonus for principals.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, board members.
Good evening.
Dr. Harrison. I'm here today to talk about the 2021 Local Growth Bonus for Principals. So, previously, the bonus that was approved back in October was the one that the state was going to fund, which was, you know, was approved by the General Assembly, that growth bonus that the state funded, that they were going to hold principals homeless for based on the 1819 data. The Local Growth Bonus was an add-on that was established by Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools in 2017, '18, and it was also brought to the board for approval in 1819. The Local Growth Bonus was not part of the 1920 Policy 4141, which is why I was not aware of it. And, but we still paid it out last year to principals in November of 2019. They got $500 if they met growth and $1,200 if they exceeded growth. Our recommendation tonight is for. Our recommendation tonight is for the board to approve to pay the local bonus add-on to principals based on the Winston-Salem 1819 growth data and to principals that are still employed at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools as of October 1st, 2020. The cost will be less than $50,000. So that's the gist, yes.
Yes, were there any principals on track to earn this bonus for 2019, '20 school year, who we should consider? I know we didn't have complete data, because we didn't have, but.
Yeah, I would probably get with Andy on that, because I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure we don't miss somebody who was, you know, could have been a new principal, who was on track to, you know, and they didn't have that opportunity in 2018, '19, you know, to use that date. I just want to make sure we don't miss anybody.
I think Dr. Hairston wants to.
So Ms. Crowley, what happened last year, anybody who was on track to receive it last year, because I was new and I did not know, we approved it, we paid it. So last year, it was paid without going through the process for those principals who were on track. This year, the state held harmless the state budget, they held harmless the growth packages for the principals, and because this was two years back when it was approved, the skills did not have it in the budget at that time, but we do have the money to pay it. So it does include all principals that would have been included. We can't predict others because we didn't take the assessment, and it's based on the growth. So they were actually paid last year without the, those that would have been paid were included.
Any other questions? Straightforward, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, yes, Ms. Kaplan?
Can I pitch you something?
Absolutely.
Another really good news thing, we all need to, these stories. So it was brought to my attention recently that we have some really good news, that the quarter cent sales tax, which we had budgeted for 11 million, is going to come in at about between 15 and a half to 16 million. And this is really great, and I know it's earmarked for the teachers, and just kind of thinking Finance Committee might be the time to have this discussion, but I would really like to see it, maybe, you know, you talked about maybe putting a couple million, you know, for a rainy day, but maybe some of this extra, we could, you know, talk about maybe a motion for the classified employees, for the TAs and the bus drivers and, you know, all of our classified employees. I would like to see it go to that.
We would have to go back to the resolution passed by the County Commission. Do you want us to get, we can get a copy of that.
Yeah, my understanding is we can do whatever we want, that it's going to go straight to us, that we do not have to go through the County Commissioners.
I think, maybe, I'm not, I don't want to speak for Dr. Hairston, but I think what maybe she's speaking of is, it was my understanding that when it was put on the ballot to the voter, that it specifically, even though this board passed a resolution, I think, that said teachers and classified, once it got to the voter, it said just for teachers. And so I think we would have to make sure that that was clear, you know, clear, because the folks who voted on it, I think it was, you know, it was kind of campaigned that it was going straight to teachers. But I agree, our classified definitely need, and that's what I think our intention was the whole time, that it would be so much to teachers and then the rest to classified, but I think kind of through the process, it got changed around a little bit. So I would just want to make sure that we were clear and doing, you know, the right thing. And I think we can put that on for later discussion on a Finance Committee meeting, right?
Because I think we really need to get it to them if we can, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mottzinger?
I just wanted to put my support behind Ms. Kaplan's proposal, and if there is the feeling that it's necessary to go through, to ask the Commissioners if that's acceptable, I would like us to do that as quickly as possible. Certainly, I know our classified employees are really desperately in need of a raise. The board keeps saying that they would like to do that. We have extra money, what we promised to the teachers is being delivered to the teachers, and I would like us to take, to move quickly and not slowly on what could be a significant and important raise for our classifieds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mottzinger.
I would like to second that. We've been talking about classified employees and getting a raise, I think, for two years, and that's a little long, if you ask me. It's time, if we have extra money, it's time to spend it, and it's time to spend it on our classified employees.
And, just to add to it, if we, you know, we've talked about trying to get our employees up to $15 an hour, maybe we could, you know, work the numbers and see if we can do that, and if we are coming a little bit short with this extra money, maybe we could look into our budget and see if we could find some additional funds to make that happen, because it really has been a long time coming.
Okay, so I think we can dive into that and think about, and looking at all of the dynamics, kind of how it played out, again, what was on the ballot, what were we supposed to use the money for, the whole process, and we can do that at the next Finance Committee meeting. Okay, Ms. Berg, do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I would like to say I'm in total agreement with Board Member Kaplan and Mottzinger, and I think I heard Board Member Hayes. This has been a long time coming for our classified employees, and if we have an opportunity, if we can make this happen, this is something that we've promised for the entire time that this new board has been in existence. There was a committee formed before this new board, and we were moving in the direction to give raises to our classified employees, so I am just in total agreement of that. Thank you.
And Ms. Jones, may I comment? I know I'm a short timer here.
No, yes ma'am.
Let me just say that a little bit of frustration is that we have not been notified of this, we talked to Dudley Watts about this. You know, our funding formula was not fully funded, and we did talk to him about funding, fully funding the funding formula through the funding formula, and he assured us that there were some additional dollars, but that they were not willing to commit to dispense of those dollars until they closed their books and they could see their way through. So we've been asking for, I think there's a small group meeting that's scheduled with the Commissioners, and I would maybe suggest that we give our CFO an opportunity to, because I wouldn't want people to be out there thinking about, there's dollars, and then we go to the Commissioners and they say something else. So I think I would like to ask that we ask our CFO, recommend that you ask the CFO to meet with the County Manager and give you a status on the budget relative to the funding formula, because the formula has not been fully funded, and then to give feedback on the assessment, and then what the agreement was with the teachers. Because I do know there was some language about where those dollars would go, and then how that would go, and I know we do respect our classified employees, but I think our CFO might want to do some research and bring back the actual numbers, because we have been given various levels of funding that might be out there, and then told that we could not access it because we were waiting for the close of the budget. So I do want you to know this has been dialogue.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, for adding into the conversation. So Finance Committee members, that concludes our discussion items for this evening. We do have two items to consider for action. The first is to consider the approval of Staff Laptop Development Services. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. I think.
Second.
Okay, thanks a little. All in favor? Ms. Mottzinger? Yes. Thank you. Okay, so our next action item to consider is the consider approval of the growth, local growth bonus for our principals. Do I have a motion? Who is, and let me remind you, Finance Committee members are myself, Ms. Parker, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Mottzinger, Ms. Bramer. Okay, so who do I have a motion from?
Message to approve.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bramer, all in favor? Ms. Mottzinger?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Chair Woodbury, that concludes Finance, and I will turn it over to Chair of Building and Grounds, Ms. Crowley.
Thank you. We're gonna, we have a short agenda, which is unusual, but welcomed. Our discussion item tonight is the middle school redistricting, and Homan Atashvar will be talking about the drawing of the new lines for the new middle school to open in 2021.
So we're co-presenting, I think, this is, while it's a short agenda, this is a 50-slide presentation, so I apologize for that, but we're going to move through it quickly as possible. So this is not a redistricting request to approve a plan, it's a request to have public hearings and bring back a plan. And we had lots of feedback on Facebook to Chair, the Committee Chair Crowley and all the board members. We had lots of feedback as to why are we doing this now? We actually have pushed this as far as we could, and it's basically because we have a new middle school coming on board, wanted to share the status. If you haven't been out, it's a beautiful area, and it will open, be completed July 2021, so principal is scheduled to be named in December, so we really have to get going, we can't wait much longer. We also wanted to have some community dialogue about Philo Magnet Program, possibility of moving Philo to a state-of-the-art performing arts magnet and get feedback from the community. It would open, would reopen as a school of the arts, fits that area, and give it rebranding. We do know that we have about 1,300 students that choice out of that school, and so the concept was to redesign the school as we construct the new school, so that we could draw back some interest in the school itself. We also have the Haynes Magnet Middle School concept, Haynes was moved when the old Haynes was closed, and children being bused far too far to go to a school, many of them choice back to Northwest, and so there's some recommendations, and we want a permission to have some dialogue around that. But first, we have to understand the middle school assignment process, which actually takes a PhD or Homan to understand it. So in each middle school, the board policy says that kids will have three schools in their attendance zone to choose from. While we work through this process, they would only have two in some instances. So I'll ask Homan to come up and kind of explain, you know, what that, you know, what that would look like, if I don't mess up this computer.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Chair Woodbury, and members of the board. So basically, what we have is, so as Dr. Hairston mentioned, with this recommendation, we're going to have some, some of the zones are going to be with two schools. So for example, in the Northeast Zone, currently we have Haynes, Mineral Springs, and Walker Town. It's going to just be Walker Town and Mineral Springs, we're redistricting the Haynes students. In the Northwest Zone, same thing, Haynes was one of the schools with Mineral Springs and Northwest, so now we're just going to have Mineral Springs and Northwest as those schools. And then as part of the Philo Hill that you'll hear about, in the Southeast, we're going to add some residential area, because we're going to need some seats in the, you know, while the construction of Philo Hill is happening, we're going to need some seats at that Haynes Middle School on the hill. So we're going to add some residential area around that, and that's now going to fall in the Southeast Zone. It's always been that way, if you've known about this, when we merged Philo and Hill, we left the Hill and Philo boundaries within the same zones where they used to be. So the Hill side was in the Southeast Zone with Southeast and East Forsyth. The Philo side was in the Southwest Green with Flat Rock and Clemmons. So we're going to keep those the same, we're just going to add some residential area around the Haynes, the Hill site, the Haynes Middle School. And then in the Southeast Green, as you'll see, one of our recommendations would be to the Philo Hill students that are in the Philo section of it, to reassign those students to Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy, where we have some space right now, until they can complete the construction of the Philo Hill location. So with the Southeast, Southwest Green Zone, we would have Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy, Flat Rock, and Clemmons, so those students will still have choices within their zone, we're just kind of managing the space in that area while we're doing the construction on that, so. All right, so with that, Southwest Blue Zone will stay the same, Flat Rock, Clemmons, and Middle Ark Middle Schools. Midwest Zone is still Jefferson, Paisley, and Wiley. And then in the East Zone, we'll still have East, Kernersville, and Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy are still in the same zone, so nothing is changing with those zones.
So I had to go to PhD Homan to understand this, but primarily, these slides are not for us to sit and, you know, go through, but primarily, these slides show you where students go, just, you know, the capacity. So if you have Haynes Magnet, you'll see that they have a total of 900 students, and you can see primarily where they come from. Mineral Springs have the 450, Walker Town 706, and you can see exactly where they come from. If you look at this 887 here, you can see a little bit about the residential children, so 251 residential, I forgot the 81.
Yes ma'am, so those 81 would be within the same zone.
Okay. Within the same zone, and they attend.
Haynes, right.
So he just provided this for you all to look at, just so you understand the complexities of this information here, and how many students we actually do have choice. Now, what happens if a student is within the same zone and they qualify for transfer, we do provide transportation, in the Magnus, we do anyway. So if you're in the East Zone and you're within these three schools, we will continue to provide transportation once we resume the transportation. But we won't go through all of this, because this is not core, but it would be shared in the community, and we posted this information so people can understand how many students are actually residential, how many choice in, and how much movement we actually have. And that will come into play when we talk about Lewisville Middle School. So as we go down, let's talk about Lewisville Middle. The proposal in the community would be that Lewisville Middle open would not enter choice until the second year in existence. The reason for that is there's lots of construction out there, lots of new building, and we would want to recommend, we wait to see how many residential students show up before we start entering that school into choice, and that would give us a year of planning. All students in grade 6, 8 would be assigned and expected to go to Lewisville Middle, with the exception of rising 8th graders who could opt to stay in place in accordance with this year's assignment. We typically, according to Mr. Walker, don't put the 8th grade in there, but the problem we have is if we do not resume transportation because of COVID, these children would not be able to participate in the transportation system to get to Lewisville. So the recommendation would be to make them residential, so they could qualify for transportation, and that would be in addition to the attendance zone recommendation. The Philo Magnet Program, again, this is all community, for community consumption and feedback. We would recommend, again, as you know, that school is ready for construction, that the school actually close for the next school year, and those students would be assigned to two areas, that would be assigned to Haynes on the hill and to Western Salem Preparatory, there's space there. The newly constructed school would open in the same location as Philo on the hill middle school the next year. There would be an arts magnet with a residential zone, meaning schools would be zoned to go to this particular school, but it also would have a magnet population of students. Students currently attending in the residential boundary are presented, would be assigned to Winston-Salem Prep in Haynes, which has space, and students would opt, if they needed choice, they could opt for Flat Rock, Clemmons, and a. Flat Rock, Clemmons, and of course, Winston-Salem Prep as a part of the Southwest Green Zone. So students who did not want to go to Haynes or Winston-Salem Prep could opt in to Flat Rock and Clemmons. And the reason we did add this to the table was because we want them to participate, if approved, in the choice application process. Haynes Magnet, as I mentioned, we're transporting students from the old attendance zone to this particular area, and the recommendation would be that the Haynes and the STEM Magnet Program and HAG Program remain assigned to Haynes. So there's no change in STEM and HAG. The residential students in the grades 6, 8 attending Haynes will be assigned to Mineral Springs, which puts them closer to a school. We're not busing them great distances. A lot of kids are opting out of this and going to other schools. Students will have the option to stay at Haynes, but would have to apply through the magnet process. So they wouldn't have to go, but they would have the opportunity to be residents somewhere else. Students would also have the option of choosing Waukertown Middle as their zone choice in accordance with the three schools. Starting 2021, Haynes, the residential boundary would be around the school. And if you've been around the school, it's a pretty good residential. Kids could actually walk across the street, and there's a nice little community center down from the school. So it's a really nice community school. It's just the kids there don't attend Haynes. And so this will put them closer and make busing better. And then students will choose between Southeast Middle, East Forsyth, and Haynes as their zone schools. So what we would do is when we went to the community, is propose all of this, which is massive, and then bring feedback back. So now, ORED, we've been working with them on the attendance zones. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to ORED. I think Tyler might be here. Is it Tyler?
Thomas.
Thomas? Thomas is here.
Thomas Dudley, yep. Thanks, Thomas. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Chair Woodbury, other members of the board. I'm Thomas Dudley with the Operations Research and Education Laboratory. Just gotta wait a second here for the slides. If I need to share my screen, just let me know. I can, I can do that as well.
Slides, same slides, yes, sir. Thomas, we got it.
Okay, excellent. So, okay, I'll just give a second to get back to where we were here. Almost there. I think it's two more. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'm Thomas Dudley with the Operations Research and Education Laboratory, part of the Institute for Transportation, Research, and Education, which is also part of NC State University. And so I'm joined today by my colleague, Mr. Terry Carlson, and I are here to discuss with you the results of our work, and also looking at some preliminary attendance boundaries as part of our coordination with the district. Next slide, please. I'm gonna just briefly give a background to our organization before briefly touching as well on our approach and the services that we've provided as part of our collaboration together, including the land use study and optimization work for the attendance boundaries. And then we'll be looking at really the culmination of that, the preliminary attendance zone or attendance boundary scenarios that we'll be looking at. Next slide, please. We call it ITRI for short, or the Institute for Transportation Research and Education. We've been conducting research in North Carolina related to transportation for over 40 years. And if you'll go to the next slide, please. Our little corner of ITRI is ORED, which is a non-biased third-party evaluation research group that helps depoliticize the school planning process. And we're able to do that through mathematical modeling, interviews with planning departments, GIS analysis, or geographic information systems analysis, and really just applied operations research. If you're curious and would like to learn more about us, our website was on that page. To speak just briefly about the services we provide, it starts with the foundational land use study, which I'll touch on in a moment. We do enrollment forecasting at the school level. We also do several types of optimization, including new school site selection and attendance boundaries. To the next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the foundational land use study, this is the component which Mr. Carlson leads for districts across the state. This is really our, our way of sort of getting the boots on the ground and sort of interacting with the local planners and the local experts who know about where residential growth is occurring within the district and where it's likely to occur over the next 10 years. So you don't want to establish an assignment plan and then be surprised by any new developments, that type of thing. Did you take into account the new apartment complex coming in across the street from the school? Yes, we did. You want to be able to say that. So that's why the effort is so particularly important, is to reach out to the right folks, the experts that are on the ground in the community that know about these types of matters. And then we do the work of how does that relate, how does that pertain to the school district? So next, we'll go to the next slide here. And anytime we talk about redistricting, I always include this slide and touch on the concept of priorities. There are so many objectives that people could be trying to accomplish in ways that they see assignment plans really fit in with their schools and their communities. That goes for board members, that goes for parents, teachers. Sort of everyone involved can have their own lens and their own perspective on what the most important factors are as part of driving any assignment plan. The most important thing to acknowledge about this is that there is no one-size-fits-all sort of assignment plan. Really, as a, as an organization, ORED, and really staff, we rely on the board's guidance to be able to tell us what your objectives are and what you would like to move forward with. We previously, just talking through a couple of these briefly, balancing utilization, making sure no schools are overcrowded or underutilized, maximizing student proximity to schools. In other words, minimizing student transportation distance. When we get to demographic balancing, there's some nuance there, and so I wanted to just give a brief moment for your board council to address any questions that you may have as it pertains to demographic balancing.
Briefly, oh, excuse me. I'll just say briefly that when it comes to demographic balancing, there's, there's interpretations of the anti-discrimination statutes that have occurred at the Supreme Court level, as well as guidance from the Office of Civil Rights about how you can use certain demographic information in making assignment decisions. And so in general, you know, race neutral or generalized, race-based criteria should be considered, and not to, not to say you cannot consider demographics and diversity in your considerations, but decisions based solely on a particular classification of race is illegal. So there are other ways that you can achieve diversity and affect racial isolation, which have been recognized by the Supreme Courts as compelling interests, but you just cannot use it as the sole factor and make specific decisions for students based on that.
Thank you. If there aren't any questions, or I believe we have a hand raised here.
Yes, yes. This is Elizabeth. And I know that when it comes to demographic balancing, some districts have used free and reduced lunch as a, as one of the criteria. Has anybody also ever looked at sort of end-of-grade testing or student achievement in terms of balancing demographics?
Yes, so there, oh, I'm not, there may be others on the call that could contribute to that as well. The most recent work that we've done with a district that was interested in exploring the proficiency and test scores direction was, I believe it was Orange County, yes. And so that was something that we were able to do, was looking at scenarios that would balance test scores.
And in addition, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mottzinger. I just wanted to say, in addition to that, it's not uncommon for districts to consider other more neutral factors such as socioeconomic factors, household income, those sorts of things, which I think would require.
Right, right. Free and reduced lunch.
Right. So, yes, so those different types of socioeconomic factors can and have been considered, in addition to test scores.
And have those been considered in the plan we're discussing tonight?
Ms. Mottzinger, this is Homan. No, ma'am, they have not for these purposes. I can tell you, we've considered using test scores in the past, not through this one, but for our free and reduced lunch data, because some of our schools are fully free and reduced lunch, that data is sort of no longer there as a, as a factor for us to use, you know, throughout, throughout our district. So we would have to do some thinking around the socioeconomic piece of it, just because census data and things like that don't quite translate down to the segments that we use for this, to the neighborhoods as much. But we do, we have considered.
Yeah, I mean, just one of the things that obviously, there's been a great deal of conversation in our community over the years about both the segregation of our schools by race, but also by socioeconomic status. And I just wanted to express that it is my wish that when we're making these choices, we're bringing those issues up and really trying to address them. So that is my deep concern. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Mottzinger, this is Mrs. Bramer. This does not, this is not Choice Committee, which we may look at that in the future. This is just limited around this real immediate need, which is why this is being handled here. So we definitely have that option later on.
No. I understand that it's about immediate need, but I also know that policy ultimate, you know, policy ultimately is made by lots and lots of small decisions that all collectively add up to outcomes. And that is why I'm bringing this up on this decision.
And also to Ms. Bramer's point, the feedback, the community feedback will be brought back to the Choice Committee for their review once we have.
Shall I proceed with the next slide here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So as far as the priorities go, we asked for, you know, top few to help sort of drive the conversation and the, specifically the Lewisville Middle School scenario, or scenarios that you'll see. So these were the top four that were selected. We can go to the next slide here. And when I talk about optimization, I like to always describe what that actually means to us, because it can mean different things to different folks, so optimum or optimal. What we mean by that is minimizing travel distance within the constraints of your building capacities. So it's not the same thing as saying that everyone gets to go to their closest school. You would have some schools that are way overcrowded and some that are underutilized in that scenario. So what we are saying instead is that this works to the best extent possible to make sure that students can go to the closest school, but acknowledging those building capacities as well as a, as a hard constraint. And so with that, we can go on to the next slide, unless there was a question. Okay, I couldn't tell. So the, just for some context and later reference here, we've included your current middle school boundaries, and we have a couple different slides here which show different sort of views on this. The next slide is the same information, but also with the high school boundaries outlined, so you can get a sense of how those sort of relate to each other. To focus in a little bit, we're looking at the correct slide here. This is looking at really the areas that we're going to be talking about during this presentation. On the west side, we have the opening of the new middle school, and then we're also discussing the Haynes residential attendance zone. And then also, how do you handle the, the temporary closure of Philo Hill for the next school year? So we'll be discussing that boundary as well. And if you will, please, next slide. So here we have our first scenario. This is in the west, looking at the Lewisville Middle School, option one. Let me speak just sort of briefly to the symbology here. We have the yellow lines, which are the existing middle school boundaries. The solid background color is the preliminary version of this proposal about what those middle school lines could be. And echoing back to your priorities, which we just mentioned, if you look over to the right side of the slide, we mentioned the three major ones that this achieves. Again, the priorities can, at times, conflict with one another. That's just part of the process. But the top three are balancing utilization, maximizing student proximity to schools, and respecting neighborhoods. So when we say balancing utilization for this scenario, we mean that each school hits about 80% of its target capacity. So in the long run, there's room for growth at each of the schools that's involved in this region, and there's residential development that's planned for each of these areas. So this is the first scenario that we're looking at here. If you're gonna call it anything, call it option one, or the balancing utilization scenario, that's what it does very well. We can look now to the next slide. And the symbology is the same here, but I added in the elementary school districts as well, just to highlight that this is a slightly different scenario that's looking at clean feeder patterns from the elementary school to the middle school level. And so what that means is that if you look at one elementary attendance zone, say Southwest or Lewisville down in the bottom, you can tell that neither of those elementary schools is being cut in half or, you know, in some other fraction by the proposed middle school boundaries. Each of the schools here, the elementaries, all feed in their entirety up to the separate middle schools. So this we call the clean feeder scenario. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Another factor that you may want to keep in mind and that, you know, questions have come up about with already is demographics. So we have here two versions of the demographic tables of what these schools could look like. We have in this first slide, by residential boundary. And so that sort of implies that everyone within that attendance boundary goes to that school. So if you look just at Jefferson and its current attendance zone, what does that school look like in terms of minority percentage if all of the students within that residential boundary went to that school and there were no transfers in and out? So the only difference in between these two tables is how transfers are handled. So the first table is by strictly, here's the boundaries, everyone goes to their assigned school, and that's the end of it. Probably the more realistic version of this is the second table, which we can flip to now, which is students attending. So this assumes that those transfer students continue to transfer and stay at their school that they've been transferring into. So you can see the minority percentages here. And this is, these, the option one and option two, this is best guesses based on the current data that we have in the student geocode of where students are. So as we're sort of on the topic of demographics, I wanted to move to the next slide here and introduce just a couple additional points to be aware of. So the data required for doing demographic balancing as a primary driver would be using free and redu-, excuse me, free and reduced lunch data, and that needs to be provided by student, or integrated test proficiency data, and that too would need, need to be at the student level. In the same just breadth as that, we need to acknowledge too that there are going to be demographic, or excuse me, geographic challenges related to this, because basically, anytime, 90-some percent cases, when you look at demographic balancing being a primary driving factor, you end up with resulting attendance boundaries that are not contiguous. So you have satellining of districts. And so that's just a geographic reality depending on, you know, where particular schools are placed and what schools you're trying to fill. So that's, that's something we need to acknowledge. Sort of moving on to the next slide here, thank you. We're looking at now the Haynes attendance zone, and sort of the frame there is centered on the existing Haynes attendance zone, which is the yellow outline, one of the yellow outlines. And so the proposal here is sending the Haynes residential students to Mineral Springs. And what we see with that from a utilization perspective is there roughly 250 Haynes students who live inside the Haynes attendance boundary, the one you're looking at now. And if all of those students move to Mineral Springs, there would still be between 100 and 150 spare seats at Mineral Springs to be able to handle that, that merger, if you will. With that, we can move to the next slide. With that, we can move to the next slide. Here would be what the minority percentages would look like for these two schools. It's, of course, need to acknowledge the asterisks there, that that reduction in minority percentages from Haynes from 59% to 46% sort of means that there would be, or assumes that there is no additional change, such as creating a new Haynes Residential Attendance Zone. But that brings us naturally to the next slide here. And so, the question is handling the temporary closure of Philo Hill in '21, '22, which is coming up. It's August. So, as we look at how to handle that closure, the situation, or the scenario that sort of bubbled to the top in discussion with staff was the image you see on the left here for next year, where, as Hamon mentioned earlier, you already have this split of the Philo Hill Zone, where the eastern part is in one zone, one choice zone, and the western half is in another choice zone. And so, if you maintain that choice system, and you have, say, the western students going to Winston-Salem Prep, and the eastern students going to Haynes, you are able to balance capacity and sort of make that transition work for the next school year in '22, '23, then that is when Philo Hill would be reopening as an arts magnet. And in that scenario, then it could have a base attendance zone around its, around the school itself, which as drawn today would be comprised of roughly 200 middle school students. So, that's what that would look like. If you would go to the next slide, thank you. So, here would be the minority percentage estimates for this, these particular scenarios that were shown on the last slide. The bottom right, the Philo Hill sort of longer-term race percentages, that's really to be determined at this point, just based on your application process and how you sort of admit students based on the district-wide arts magnet program. With that, that is the conclusion of the ORED section of the presentation. I'm glad to pause to answer any questions that may have arisen.
Are there any questions?
So.
Okay, Ms. Burke.
Yes. I'm just wondering, why is it necessary to temporarily close Philo Hill? I know that in the past, when we've built new schools, when we renovated schools, we have never had to close schools. We've always used trailers and pods, and we haven't had to close. So, I'm wondering, why is it necessary to close Philo Hill?
It is not. It just expedites the ability to construct the school and get it open on time. If we did not close it, we'd have to gradually move students, and they are poised to put them in mobile units. But after visiting Philo on several occasions, we felt due to safety and to getting the construction done, that would be a better scenario for them.
Won't this create a hardship for the students and the parents?
Now, they'll have transportation. There's about four, how many students? About 500 students, 500. We know that 1,300 opt out of the school. And so, some of them would go to Haynes and be transported, and some would go to Winston-Salem Prep and be transported.
What about the hardship that it would create on parents who will have to drive a little bit further, or have someone drive them a little bit further to get to their students if an emergency arises?
It would be for one year.
I think that, I just don't see why we have to close, when this is something that we have done over and over and over in the past without closing down a school. I just don't see the necessity to close down Philo Hill. I also have another question. We were talking about those top priorities that were selected, and I wanted to know if with these priorities that were selected, I'm just curious, Mr. Elliott, have these priorities caused us to end up with extremely high minority percentages in certain schools and extremely low minority percentages in other schools?
Thomas, if you could answer that. It's a Thomas on there. Thomas, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here. This is Thomas Dudley. So, as far as the board's interpretation of what would be a significant demographic or diversity difference between different scenarios, that's, you know, I have no professional opinion on that. That would be at the discretion of the board.
Okay, and the board selected these priorities that have landed us with these extremely high minority percentages or extremely low. Okay, thank you.
Well, we actually looked at that. That's what delayed us from last week, and it didn't change significantly. The only change that probably would have occurred is if you'd added free or reduced lunch or test scores. Most of it is community-driven. And then, you would notice on Jefferson, the residential population has fewer minorities, but once you add choice, the minority population increases at schools like Jefferson, which does increase diversity. So, this, I'm sorry, Ms. Burke.
No, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I'll wait, thanks.
So, the timeline, just to go through the timeline, tonight, we have a work session, and it's merely to, not merely, but it's to ask for permission to proceed with the, with the public hearings. We will come back to the full board next week for final yea or nay. You can go with your community hearings. The community meeting for Lewisville would be scheduled at Reagan High School on the 30th, when we come back from Thanksgiving. December 1st would be the Haynes meeting, and December 2nd would be the Philo meeting at Parkland. On the 8th, from 8 to 4, this will be a full meeting. There will be a choice meeting with the board attorney, ORED, executive cabinet, to really look at the community feedback and look at those additional priorities to be sure that what's happening or what the, you know, what feedback is going to be received, how, what adjustments you want to make. And then, the 15th, the presentation will come back to the full board. January 12th, that will give the board a month to really process the information that comes out of that committee. That would come back for approval. And then, again, February through April, the committee could spend time really looking at high school feeder pattern adjustments. And those were those feeder pattern adjustments that could be considered as you go through this process. And then, of course, Lewisville Middle is open for construction. And the overall recommendation after going through this and listening to your desired outcomes is really to have more of a standing opportunity to talk about attendance lines throughout every year, not just make it an event. It's a part of the operating process. What would be the format of the community meetings? There would be in-person at 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. at these high schools, which are not open to students yet. Colan would be, and Hamon, Darryl Walker would actually facilitate the meetings. There would be socially distancing, mask required, and there would be a screening process for these in-person meetings. And then, there would be a virtual meeting with Facebook access and a survey to give feedback. The meetings will be recorded and posted on our website with a feedback form. And again, I want to go back to, on December 8th, that meeting would be, and our new interim superintendent would work with Ms. Breamer and the committee to devise the agenda for that meeting. The choice process timeline, just wanted to remind you, because we do have a tight process, there was, the school choice showcase will continue virtually. We, again, have the 8th, that has to be intense work around bringing the board the final proposal, and just wanted to remind everyone of the magnet and choice timelines. Now, these timelines are very important to communicate to parents, so if they're going to change, Hamon would need some advance notice. Everybody wants to know, what's going to happen to me? We do have an AR around opening new schools, assignment of assistant principal, principal. The principal information has already gone out, so there's some definite guidelines that we follow with staffing new schools, and also closing schools if I were to close. Alignment, transfer, and promotion of personnel, all these things. I just wanted to not go over it, but to assure you there is a process in place. Middle school redistricting staff, principal selection process is already in queue. They will bring you a principal in December. Very important, because you have to communicate, get letters out, and so forth and so on. Principal starts in January. The core team selection process would start in February, and so forth and so on. And so, this just is a reminder of how everything sort of is integrated, so you can't change a whole lot of dates, because it is on a tight timeline. And so, additional recommendations in the work is, again, to look at the middle and high school feeder patterns, which you all have had a preliminary exposure. There's not a real plan for that, other than getting back together and deciding on a timeline. The results of the student assignment survey conducted by Forsyth Future, that's going to impact a lot when you start doing your choice work. Magnet program recommendations, well, all of this has to work together in one large plan. And then, of course, there's a new middle school that is slated for southeastern part of Forsyth County, and new property has to be looked at, and that will have other impacts. So, some people may ask, well, why didn't you have a, do something with the, you know, the zones in that area? Well, because you have, you know, we have a new school coming on board, so there will be some adjustments over there. So, lots of work to do in a very short period of time, but the team has worked very hard to be sure that, that, you know, they could get this done. And ORED has been great to work with. And again, we did listen to the feedback from Ms. Mott Sanger about demographics, so that's what delayed us. We had to go back and really look at what we were doing to be sure that we could justify just not solely using demographics, and as we see some other things. And in the future, that should be something, but that's a long process, especially when you don't have test scores coming in. So, as you'll see on the action item, that concludes our presentation. ORED is open for questions, Hamon as well, and we have Colan here. I'm not sure Mr. Walker's here either, but the request is not to approve this plan, but to have permission to go out and have meetings about the plan and bring the information back to the choice committee.
I do have a question about the current enrollment versus capacity at Haynes Middle School. And I realize that when this year-long shutdown goes, that 250 residential Haynes students would be out. I'm just a little concerned about capacity and if this means additional pods, or what that means.
No, ma'am, the way we're looking at this, it'd just sort of be a switch between the same amount of students, you know, coming and going, the residential kids going back in their geographic area, and then the boundary around Haynes would not affect their capacity. So, there wouldn't be any additions there.
Okay, and then, the other question is, I noticed the size of the residential zone around what will be the new arts magnet, Philo Hill, versus the size of the residential zone around Haynes, which is also a magnet, and just wondering what the rationale is behind the difference in those geographic sizes.
So, I'll go to Philo. As I mentioned, there are 1,300 students that opt out. There are 1,800 students in that area. We couldn't possibly accommodate that many students in that particular school, because the school is being built for seven fifths, how many?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. So, we'll need a smaller residential, because likelihood of children returning will be high if it opens as an arts magnet, and something that's quite different and energizing. So, it's to accommodate the actual students who may want to attend, plus leaving space for magnet. So, it does decrease.
Okay, and you didn't feel like we needed to do that for Haynes with it being a magnet? I'm just wondering how many more residential students will be at, with the new lines of the Haynes versus the old, and why the difference between two magnets?
So, the students at Haynes, the students right now at Haynes, like you said, is swapping student for student. It's reassigning those students who are transported down with students who are in the area. And we don't have any reason to believe that there would be like a huge influx of kids because there's not, it's just the same as it is now.
So, it's roughly 250, 250 kids in this?
Yes, ma'am. Trends in that area, especially with choice, we know that southeast and, you know, east Forsyth, so we know that kind of the movement in that area.
Okay.
And then, to the, if I can hear your phone, one necessary thing was because we need some capacity with the 1,800 students in that area, really need some capacity to be able to do the Philo Hill construction, at least for next year. And then, to your point about smaller area on Philo Hill, that was just a proposal right now. Of course, that's, you know, pending more work that we're going to do, whether it's going to be a little larger, a little smaller, once we get more into the programming piece of it at Philo, and see whether we want to, you know, have 300, 400, or 200, you know, just that kind of thing. So, that was just kind of a proposal there for that.
Okay, great.
And I will ask, you have the dates for the meetings. If you plan to attend, if you'll let Lisa know, so we can make sure we don't have, we will have the appropriate number of board members at each session. Any other questions?
Yeah. If there are no further questions, we're going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you have your hand up?
Barbara was first, please.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. We'll go to Barbara.
You're muted. Barbara, you're muted.
Thank you. My question is, how will the proposed attendance boundaries fit into our goals of equity?
So, if you look at our strategic plan, equity is around programming, and that's around programming. Right now, we're looking at attendance lines. Equity is access to programming, and we hope that Philo will give children access to the arts and programming, but that was not one of the priorities we listed there. That really is when you start to open the school, you want to have, you want to be sure that you don't open Lewisville and have, you know, this, all these extra kinds of things that other schools are not afforded, and we don't feel that way. We feel it's a nice school, it's state-of-the-art, but we feel that children at Northwest will receive the same identical support.
And it also, our equity policy also does address facilities, and the Philo Hill facility, I mean, if it's a majority-minority school, then that means we're getting a new facility in a neighborhood that has had a substandard facility.
That's a great response.
I'm trying. Okay, Elizabeth.
Yes, I wanted to ask, when we're putting this out for public comment, how robust is the planning for Mineral Springs as an arts magnet, as in, when we're building it, you know, what are we doing to actually?
Do you mean Philo Hill?
I'm sorry, Philo Hill. Are we building it with special capacities or buildings towards the arts? Are we partnering with UNCSA? What are we doing to make sure that it's seen as a really robust program? Because that seems important when you're putting something out as we want to do this and this. Is, what is the this with that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Ms. Mott Sanger, this is Colan. I'll address that. We've been in conversation with our arts department, excuse me, with Brad Oliver. We have not, just because of the confidentiality nature of this discussion, have not engaged discussions with other groups like the School of Arts, but we do plan to do that. We've had added arts, excuse me, added visual arts rooms and performing arts rooms. We've had some other, thank you, we've had some other enhancements to the arts program that we've, that we have incorporated into the design.
Okay, because I think that's a critically important thing, is making sure that, you know, when Atkins was built, Atkins was built with different capacities than other schools. And I want to make sure that Philo Hill is indeed being built with those different capacities in mind.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mott Sanger, again, I just want to also say, Ms. Hamon, that we also have that group, our cooperative strategies working on, around our magnet programming, so they're really, in fact, we've seen some of the work so far, they're going to hopefully present shortly to the choice committee, but they're really looking at all our magnet programs and how to best equip them to be successful, so, yes, ma'am.
And finally, I want to say that we asked Donna Cannon to put together a team upon approval. approval, community members and staff from the school to help further work with Brad to develop the design for the school so that it reaches all kids. So we, and we also looked at the feeder high school. Some of the children would certainly end up at Reynolds, so we, we want to include some of those children. So there is an intentionality to the planning part, but we certainly wanted to get to the table for approval first.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to consider approval to proceed with middle school redistricting public hearings?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor on the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
I...
Thank you, Elizabeth, but we don't need your vote since you're not on this committee, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I have to check every time because I can't keep it straight either. So any opposed? I don't think there were. The motion carries. Thank you. And we will transition to Board Member Burke with the Curriculum Committee.
Thank you so much, Board Member Crowley. Moving right along with curriculum, we have three discussion items and we will begin with new course proposals provided by Dr. Latton, Executive Director for Teaching and Learning. Dr. Latton.
Good evening, Curriculum Committee Chair Burke, Curriculum Committee, School Board Members and Dr. Hairston. I will share all new course proposals for the 2021-22 school year. We adhere to the following timeline for course requests and approvals, and I will guide us through a brief overview of 10 new record, 10 new, sorry, course requests. First, starting with our career and technical education programs. As you can see, we have three main courses that we got requests for, the first being Advertising and Design, the second two and third, sorry, being Drone Technology 1 and 2, and then the last being Exploring Family and Consumer Science 3. Within our Advertising and Design, this course currently fits within the Adobe Academic Pathway for students to earn their actual, their actual Adobe Certified credential. There is no additional teacher PD needed due to the connection of the Adobe Academy. Within the Drone Technology 1 and 2, we've received several inquiries from the business community for drone operators. The Smith Reynolds Airport is actually seeking at this time a drone training center that will open up many jobs in this area. The cost and the equipment for supplies are actually covered within the CTE budget. Lastly, Exploring Family and Consumer Science 3 will be offered in eighth grade. We currently have sixth and seventh grade offerings in Exploring Family and Consumer Science 1 and 2. And the modules that will be introduced to eighth grade are finance, apparel, as well as hospitality. For AIG and magnet offerings, we would like to extend our offerings to IB History HL, which is higher level, and IB History SL, which is standard level. Teacher training for these courses are $775 per teacher and we're looking at training two teachers here. And this would actually extend our IB diploma program. We would like to add an AP offering within AP Art and Design at West Forsyth. This will introduce students to 2D and 3D art and design and will allow students and introduce them to portfolio exams. Lastly, for our core content area, we have two social studies offerings and also one science offering. All three are pending state approval. The two social studies offerings are economics and personal finance as well as civics literacy. Both of these courses are pending approval for new graduation requirements. The state is set to meet the third week in January and it's set for approval. The last science course that's pending approval is organic and biochemistry. This will serve as an introductory course to help guide students through those complex chemistry concepts. Our curriculum teams are currently already writing and will continue to build curriculum writing over the next few months to provide and solidify teacher resources. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
The organic class, will that count as one of the sciences or will it have to be an elective?
It will actually be an elective course.
Okay. So that would be an elective, it will not count as a science. Okay.
I'm curious about the title of the class. Why wouldn't it be organic chemistry and biochemistry or organic hyphen and bio hyphen chemistry?
I can get back with you on that.
Because organic isn't a subject. I'm just, I don't know if that's just how it's, if it's a state class and that's how it's...
And it is a state class right now.
Okay.
Depending on approval by the state itself, yes.
Okay.
Organic chemistry is a definite class and it's a definite, like draw your line, you're going to make it or break it in chemistry classes.
No, I know, I know what organic chemistry is. My point is organic is not. It's, and right now, the title of the class is organic and biochemistry. It's splitting hairs, but I'm just saying it, it is what it is. Organic is not a subject.
Will you email that to everybody? Will you?
Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth, you have questions?
Yes, I just wanted to ask about that new require, the state required class on economics and personal finance. And the reason is, of course, for students to have a deep, broader understanding of economics would be, of course, wonderful. But what I'm seeing, when I'm seeing the course description, it seems to be very, very focused on personal finance. Could you explain a little better what that, how that class is going to be formulated just for, so that we know and the public knows? Is that mostly personal finance or which topics in economics are going to be covered?
I would have to get back with you on that. Unfortunately, this is not a course that our district is actually writing. This is a course that is actually written by the state.
Right. I just think it's important for, because we, we're the board meeting, so people listen to these to get, to learn as much as they can about what we're doing. So I would appreciate just an update at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
On what's exactly included in that class and is it really economics and financial responsibility or is it mostly financial responsibility with a smattering of economics? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from board members? Thank you so much, Dr. Latton.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Ms. Heather Barksdale, Director of Teacher Education, and we will be provided with the Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Ms. Barksdale?
Good evening, Curriculum Committee Chair Burke, Curriculum Committee Members, Board of Education Members and Dr. Hairston. I'm here tonight to discuss our district's Beginning Teacher Support Plan. On September 3rd of this year, the North Carolina State Board of Education passed a policy change. The policy is TCED-016 and it outlines our Beginning Teacher Support Plan and what we need as a district. As a result of this policy change, we also have to change our district policy and get it board approved. So according to the TCED-016 policy, all districts have to have a Beginning Teacher Support Plan and, oh, sorry, and it goes over these five standards. The first standard is systematic support for quality induction programs. We also have a standard with mentor selection, development and support mentoring for instructional excellence, beginning teacher professional development, and then standard five is formative assessment of candidates and programs. We currently have a plan in place and it was approved by the board almost exactly one year ago today. So our current support that we have, all of our support is aligned with our beginning, with our North Carolina teaching standards. And all of our Beginning Teacher Support includes BT 1, BT 2 and BT 3, which are first, second, third year teachers and residency licensed teachers. So we currently offer a state certified mentor to all BT 1, 2 and 3 teachers, three-day orientation session for all first-year teachers when they are first hired. BT 1 teachers complete a module, where it's a Canvas module now, around Teach Like a Champion. They also receive coaching support, networking sessions. BT 2s will receive professional development focused on instruction, coaching support, networking sessions. And then our third-year teachers still get professional development around their data and then the coaching support. We also have another part of our plan with mentor support and training. All BT 1, 2 and 3 teachers receive a state certified mentor. They've been through a 10-hour state certification process as well as a local process in session with me. And then they also include, or also included in the mentor training is continuous professional development throughout the year on mentoring and coaching. Finally, it addresses administrator responsibilities, so it's the administration principals' jobs to assign those mentors to their BTs. And we like to do that within the same school building and within the same content if, if it's available. Provide the Beginning Teacher with optimum working conditions that's outlined in our state board, I mean, sorry, our Beginning Teacher Support Plan, and then provide time for our mentors and mentees to meet. So changes to the plan since November 19th. We have updated our program evaluations to meet the guidelines. So again, the guidelines that changed in the policy in September, we have changed our program evaluations to meet that. And the change really just said that every serve, every principal and Beginning Teacher first year will complete a survey at the end of the first year to evaluate the effectiveness of our educator preparation programs. We've also updated the professional development for Beginning Teachers for second and third year Beginning Teachers and updated our professional development requirements for our mentors in accordance with the policy. And then as we move forward, we'll continue to make changes and increase opportunities for professional development for all those that are involved, our Beginning Teachers and our mentors. We're also working to develop hybrid professional development, just so we have Canvas courses available, in-person professional development when we can, when we can do that. And then just continue to use our teacher working condition survey, the surveys that we do at the end of the year with our mentors, and just continue to increase our program to help in our recruitment and retention of our Beginning Teachers. Does anyone have any questions about any of the changes or our Beginning Teacher Support Plan? Yes, ma'am.
With, it looked like the mentor would do one evaluation, is that correct, with the, with the teacher?
Yes, one observation.
Observation, correct.
And that's in the state board policy, yes.
And so they only do the one observation, is that per year or is it?
That's, I believe it's only required in your first year, the mentor, or it can be another peer does an observation for the Beginning Teacher. I can clarify that for you.
Is that a change or, because I thought in the past they had possibly done, maybe had more observation time with them. Could they do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. In the, according to state board policy, within their North Carolina, their nieces, then the mentor teacher does one observation and it's recorded in nieces along with three observations by a principal.
Right.
In terms of informal observations, we are currently, we looked at our teacher working condition survey and it showed that in the past few years, there hasn't been a great deal of observations done or where the mentor and the mentee get to observe each other. So we're currently trying to work that into our, our future plans and talking to principals and really hoping that they provide that time. But no, there's not a definite requirement of observations.
Okay, but as a district, we're going to try to encourage more of that.
Yes.
Okay, because I think that's, that's very important. And also with their evaluation of their, their teacher training that they had, is that only with North Carolina universities or would that go out to, you know, if they, they had a, if they were trained in a school outside, you know, our state or?
The survey that they'll receive at the end of the year is sent directly from DPI and they will not release any of the survey questions. The goal of the survey is to look at and evaluate all EPPs, so...
So that would be everywhere.
That would be everywhere.
Nationwide. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions, board members? Thank you, Ms. Barksdale. We're presenting the Beginning Teacher Support Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll hear from the Director, the Chief Academic Accountability Officer, Andy Kraft, proposal for end-of-course testing. Mr. Kraft?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep. I do? Yep. We saluted in there. Good evening, board members. I'm here to talk to you about our first semester testing for our high school students, that is the EOCs. COVID's made everything more difficult for us this year and that goes for EOCs as well. We don't have very many good options, but I'm going to, going to let you know about our plan and seek your feedback before we begin to move forward. Give Kevin just a second. It's all right. Yep. Yep, we passed it there, Kevin. All right, one more. There you go. Okay, so you may or may not be familiar with the EOCs. These are end-of-course tests that are given in our high schools at the end of first semester and they're given at the end of the year. They're given in four courses, Math 1, Biology, English 2 and Math 3. All of these courses, when students complete them, students are required to take the end-of-course assessment that comes from the state. So in Winston-Salem here, we have an AR. That AR says students must take the EOC to earn credit in an EOC course. We're asking you, and it's, it's our recommendation, that we consider waiving this just for our seniors that are graduating at the end of first semester, and I'll explain to you why. There are some complicating factors here, but that would just be waiving this administrative regulation for our seniors that are graduating in January. Students, this is per, so students that do not take the EOC receive a, receive a zero for their final exam grade. The 100-point converted score on the EOC must, per state law, count as 20% of students' grade in an EOC course. Okay. So, so during COVID, you can imagine why these things might get a little more complicated for us. And let me kind of talk to you about what it is that we're thinking of doing. So schools have to test 95% or more of their students. And with the new ESA accountability model, if they don't, there's, there's actually some punitive measures. Whatever number of scores below that 95% threshold, those are all counted as non-proficient. Okay? So if students don't, or if schools don't reach that 95% threshold, their school performance grade will suffer. Okay? And schools have to administer these EOCs on campus. There is no remote option for testing EOCs. You can imagine challenges with COVID. And so EOCs are used to calculate achievement, which is part of that school performance grade as well as growth. It's also used for EVOs, when teachers' growth scores are created. And the state dictates that these EOCs must be administered in the last five days of the semester. There's a lot of requirements we have to work around here. Okay. So this is our plan for first semester and of course testing. It's slightly different than the normal school year plan, but I'll explain to you why we think this is a better plan. In a typical year, we would administer first period on one day, second period on one day, third period on one day. But as you can imagine, that's going to space out these EOCs. It makes it much more difficult for us to do social distancing and for everything else. So as a result, it's our recommendation that we are only going to test single subjects. Now recognize that Math 3 and Math 1 is on the same day and that's because students wouldn't be taking Math 1 and Math 3. They wouldn't be taking both of those courses. They wouldn't be taking both of those courses. So, so we're recommending we bring back our high school students on January 13, 14, and 15, just the high school students that are taking an EOC course. They would take Math one or three on that Wednesday. If they're not taking either one of those courses, they would not come back. English two on that Thursday, the 14th, Biology on that Friday, the 15th. Those have to be administered in person at school. We, we don't have an option there. In addition, we have CTE exams. CTE exams also have to be administered in person and you see our schedule there. First period in the morning, second period in the afternoon, third and fourth period in the morning and afternoon on, on Wednesday. All of those have to be administered within that five day period. Okay. So, so how are we going to work with students here? Yes, we're going to be providing transportation for students. So all students that want to come to take this test, transportation is provided, child nutrition is provided. What we're looking at is, you know, how do we distance kids? So remember, you're going to have, it doesn't shake out this cleanly, but it's about one eighth of the student body on campus at a time, okay? So when you think about that, we, we estimate the test sessions really, you know, I'm being very conservative here with the five to 10. It's probably going to be less than five students per classroom, okay? So we have about 60 to 90 classrooms on our high school campuses. And when I, you know, divided the total number of kids taking a particular course, it, it really turns out to be less than five. There are some other challenges if students have accommodations and have to be tested together. And we have to work around that, so it's not as clean as my, you know, simple division problem. But, but I really estimate it's going to be less than five students per, per classroom that are taking EOC in the same classroom. As a result, we'll be able to maintain the appropriate distance. Social distancing is required by COVID. All testing is administered online. What that means is students will be using a computer. They will not be testing remotely. They have to test in the school building on a school provided device. So this, this is how we are doing everything we can to work with those students who are going to say, you know, I don't feel comfortable coming back to the school campus to take a test. We will submit a testing outside the window request. This is a DPI form, you know, and it's typically used for a student that would graduate early, as an example. So if a student's graduating early, you would test outside of that five day window and DPI would approve and allow you to do that. We're going to submit a testing outside the window request for all of our high schools. And, and this was on the advice of DPI. And so any students that don't come in to test during that five day window, we'll be able to test them during a makeup window. And that is between the end of this five day window and February 15th. That's the end of the fall testing window. And so some students may even test in a one-on-one setting. We're, we're just going to have to see how many students don't come in during that five day test window. And based on that number, we're going to do everything we can to test those students between the end of the test window and February 15th, okay? We recognize that at that point, there may still be some students that haven't come in to test yet. So those students will have an incomplete, okay? They, they can still earn credit for the course, but for the time, they will have an incomplete. We'll submit an additional testing outside the window request and those students will be tested at the end of the school year, okay? So that allows us an opportunity to do everything we can to work with all students to take their end of course test and to get their credit in the course, okay? So you see that there at the bottom. Any student that does not take the EOC will receive an incomplete until they complete the assessment. They will not fail the course. They will not have to retake the course. We'll, we will simply make all the accommodations necessary in order to test the student, either during that makeup window until February 15th or during the spring test window at the end of the school year. So that, there's, there's kind of one other small piece to this, and I mentioned this earlier. We will have some students that will graduate in January, okay? And so for those students, now that's small, it's, it's less than 25 students across our entire district that are graduating and enrolled in an EOC course. What, what we're recommending is that we revise that AR simply to say that those students can still get credit for the course even if they don't take the EOC. And we would recommend that would just apply to students that are graduating in January and taking an EOC. And, and that EOC course would be a graduation requirement. So at that point, I'll pause and ask if there's any questions, yes.
Were they waived last, at the end of, was my understanding, they were waived at the end of last year?
Yeah, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up, that's right. So the Department of Public Instruction sent a waiver request to the U.S. Department of Education to ask for those assessments to be waived. And, and the U.S. Department of Education said, yes, they can be waived and they were last year. DPI has sent another request this year and that request was denied.
Is there a possibility that it could be waived if again, the governor declares the state to be closed?
So again, that would be the choice of the U.S. Department of Education. It would not be up to the governor. So even, and that's interesting, isn't it? So even if the governor says all schools are closed, you know, everything I just went over here really state, for the most part, they're U.S. Department of Ed regulations. And so, so they wouldn't be waived unless the U.S. Department of Ed reconsidered that waiver request and granted it. And so as of right now, the U.S. Department of Ed is, has submitted a clear memo that says currently waivers will not be granted this year. But that may change in the spring. Are there other questions?
Any additional, any additional questions from board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraft, for providing this proposal for EOC testing. At this time, we have three action items. Dr. Harriston, can you assist by taking role for the vote?
Oh, Board Member Burke, she is attending to some issues with the district. So I will have to assist or Deion can assist us with the role call.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
The first action item to consider is approval of new course proposals. Is there a?
Yes, Board Member Crowley. Sounds like Board Member Crowley with the motion and Board Member Mott Singer with the second.
And I'll call, I'll call the Curriculum Committee role call. Of course, Barbara Burke.
Yes.
Marilyn Parker.
Yes.
Dana Jones.
Yes.
Elizabeth Mott Singer.
Yes.
Leah Crowley.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The second item to consider is approval for Beginning Teacher Support, for the Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Parker.
I'll second Jones.
I'll take the role. Board Member Burke.
Yes.
Board Member Parker.
Yes.
Board Member Jones.
Yes.
Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes.
Board Member Crowley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. The motion passes. And the last action item for curriculum to approve is consider approval for a proposal of end of course testing. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval, Board Member Jones.
Second, Board Member Crowley.
I'll take the role. Board Member Burke.
Yes.
Board Member Parker.
Yes.
Board Member Jones.
Yes.
Board Member Mott Singer.
With my nose closed, yes.
Board, Board Member Crowley.
Just one point of clarification, does this mean that seniors, it will be waived for seniors? That was in the, okay, yes, then I've heard.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. And at this time, this concludes our curriculum meeting. And at this time, I will turn things over to Chair Mott Singer, Chair of the Policy Committee. Thank you.
Well, good evening and all I see is discussion items and action items with nothing to discuss or nothing to act on. Was there something you wish to add, Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you, Ms. Mott Singer. I just wanted to say for the record, there are no discussion or action items on the agenda. However, earlier today, I did send you all a memo explaining some changes to various administrative regulations. AR 40, excuse me, AR 5124, which we heard a little bit about tonight. There's a change reflecting a change at the state level in the CTE courses. And it sounds like I need to prepare a change reflective of the vote that the Curriculum Committee just took in, in regards to seniors that are graduating in January. So I will make that change and get that back to you. In addition, there's changes to AR 4116.5 and AR 5131.7, which both of those are regulations dealing with prohibited relationships with students. And there's some language that was added to clarify that volunteers fall within the category of, of individuals who are prohibited from having those relationships and also clarifying the obligation of employees who become aware of inappropriate relationship involving a volunteer and a student to immediately report that to law enforcement.
Thank you very much. I would like to just make a request that at our next meeting, we really do address clearly policies on any mitigating factors that we're discussing as far as return to school as well as adopting some metrics. And I know that that's not on the agenda. I have asked repeatedly for those things and I really would like to just formally request that next time we have an agenda meeting, we're taking a very serious deep dive into those questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. The next agenda item is announcements. I would like to start by recognizing the National Association of School Psychologists celebrate the National School Psychologists Week, which is the ninth through the 13th to highlight the important work of all of our school psychologists and other educators to help all of our students thrive. According to NASP, this year's theme, "The Power of Possibility," conveys hope, growth, resilience, and renewal. Possibility suggests that even something as small as a seed can grow into something magnificent. Power implies that things can and will happen. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, school psychologists work with students, families, educators, administrators, and communities to ensure all our students are empowered to see the possibilities and develop positive change to thrive in school and life. They provide direct and indirect interventions to support students' social, emotional learning, mental and behavioral health, and academic success. We would like to recognize and express appreciation for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Psychological Services Department. The next announcement is Wednesday, November the 11th, the district will be closed for Veterans Day holiday. The next announcement is on Thursday, November the 12th, at 5:00 PM, we will have the Choice Committee Virtual Meeting. Also on November the 12th, the application deadline for our community members to apply to serve on one of the Advisory Councils is due. The application is on our website. Those Advisory Councils are Equity, African-American Inclusion, and Facilities. Again, they're due on November the 12th. The next announcement is the dates that students are returning to in-person instruction. So of course, the kindergartners return to school Monday, November the 9th. First grade students will return on Monday, November the 16th. And of course, the pre-K and EC self-contained returned on November the 2nd. I would like to add two additional announcements by way of privilege of the chair to recognize Kamala Harris as the first woman elected as Vice President of the United States. As a woman on an all-female Board of Education, I am empowered to say all Americans should be proud of this moment in our country. I would also like, like to take this opportunity to recognize that tonight is the last board meeting for Dr. Harrison and she is attending to an emergency issue right now. She's not here. But we were definitely very happy to see her official portrait that will be displayed among all of the other previous superintendents of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Our community recognizes the history that she made and all of the good that she has brought to our community. And I would like to say on behalf of the board to her, thank you. Yes.
And with Kamala Harris and to a spirit of inclusion, I would like to acknowledge Happy Diwali to all the people it applies to. Thanks, Board Member.
Yes. So now we have to go into closed session to discuss the personnel matters. Their motion to go into closed.
So move, Board Member Crowley.
If there are no further question or discussion, all in favor, let it be known by I. Board Member Burke.
Yes.
Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.